We'll call the Williams County Board of County Commissioners meeting to order for December 5th, 2023. The first thing of business this morning is the reorganization of the board, and at this time we'll do roll call. David?
Bo?
Here.
Cory?
Here.
Steve?
Here.
Barry?
Here.
There being a quorum, we will proceed. At this time, we'll open it up for nominations for Chairman of the Williams County Board of County Commissioners.
I'd like to nominate Commissioner Kemp.
Do we have a second for that?
I'll second.
Any other nominations? Any discussion? There being no discussion, we'll do a roll call vote. Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes. Okay, uh, we need to... Yeah, Vice?
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay, let's, uh, any nominations for Vice Chair?
I would nominate Commissioner Anderson.
Is there a second?
I would second that.
Any discussion? Uh, hearing none, roll call vote, please, Brenda.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
And Barry?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, do we need anybody else? Okay. Uh, with that, let's do the Pledge of Allegiance. Okay, we'll start with the consent agenda. What are the wishes of the board?
Move to approve.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, uh, Brenda, roll call vote, please.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes. Motion passes. Okay. Let's, uh, jump right to public comments. Is there any public comments from any of the people in the audience? Anybody wish to approach the board? Okay, seeing none, we'll jump right into planning and zoning.
Good morning, Michelle Haugen, County Planning. First item today is LU-0054-23, which is Ed Rintimaki on behalf of LMA Pasternak. They're requesting a zone change to the rural residential zoning district for a 16.09 acre lot. The subject property is currently within the agricultural zoning district. The applicant is requesting a minor subdivision to create two lots. Parent parcel is approximately 80 acres. The newly created lots will be approximately 63.31 acres and 16.09 acres. The larger lot will remain in the agricultural zoning district, while the zone change to rural residential will be for the smaller 16.09 acre lot. The purpose of that smaller lot will be to encompass the existing home and farm buildings and shops along, um, on the property. There are two access points into the existing home off of 72nd Street Northwest, and the larger property can be accessed also off of 72nd Street Northwest. This minor subdivision has gone through the review process and approved for mylar, and the lots will be known as MS-23-0030 and MS-23-0031. Recordation of the plat is contingent upon the approval of the zone change. On this one, we have not heard, um, any comments back from Bone Trail Township. Um, the Planning and Zoning Commission did hear this on October 19th of 2023 and tabled the issue until, or tabled the plan until the November meeting for more information on what the purpose of the lot was going to be. The owner, LMA, is going to be selling the smaller lot to John Cook, who is going to plan to reside there for part-time, of part of the time during the year. He does plan to have it remain as a farmstead and has no indications to have any type of commercial business there. Uh, Mr. Cook said that he is a dear friend of LMA and has many conversa, has had many conversations regarding the property, and would not do something with the property that she would not like. He also did mention that the tillable land would be farmed by Bren Rosland. Um, after hearing that, then, on, um, November 16th, 2023, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval.
Okay, uh, I don't, is anybody here representing the applicant? Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
I make a motion to approve following planning and zoning recommendation.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Brenda, roll call vote, please.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so the second one we have is Mike Wells, owner of Wells Rentals LLC. Um, it is LU-0057-23. They are requesting a variance to construct an accessory building prior to a primary residence within the rural residential zoning district. Um, the building will be 48 by 94, accessory building or shop, and, um, the applicant does plan to build a home on the property. However, they do have a home in town, so feel the accessory building is needed more at this time. Purpose for this building is to store personal items such as boats, jet skis, lawn care items, and golf carts. Subject property is accessed off of 114th Road Northwest. This one, um, the township's Nessun Valley, which is ran by Williams County, so no, um, comment was sent for on this. We did receive public comment back, and as you can see within the pop, um, within the packet, there is one that is in opposition of this item and one in support. Um, when it was heard at the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, they did vote, um, to recommend approval 7-0.
Okay, Mr. Wells, do you have any comment for the board? Okay. What are the wishes of the board?
I'd make a motion to approve following staff comments.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Brenda, roll call vote, please.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, so the next one, LU-0058-23, which is Dylan Hollein. They are requesting a variance to construct a 36 by 72 accessory building prior to the prim, primary residence. Purpose of this building is to store their personal items in, um, while they are constructing the home that they will be building next spring. The subject property is going through the minor subdivision review process as well, and currently, um, will be carving out that portion of land. It was approved, um, the zone change for that little piece was approved in November at the county commission meeting. We did not receive any comment back from Tioga Township, I believe it was maybe just confusion because we had one sent to them the month before. Um, access is off of North Dakota State Highway 40, and on this one, the Planning and Zoning Commission did recommend approval on this as well.
Okay, is the applicant, uh, present? Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
Make a motion to approve following planning and zoning recommendations.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Brenda, roll call vote, please.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the final one we have today is LU-0060-23, Ed Rintimaki on behalf of Paul Wyrock. They're requesting a variance for two lots to remain in the agricultural zoning district that do not meet the minimum required acreage. This is located within Missouri Ridge Township, and no comment was received back from them. Um, the applicant is requesting a minor subdivision to create three lots. The parent property is approximately 120 acres less the state highway. However, the northeast of the southeast will not be included in the minor subdivision process, leaving approximately 69.86 acres. The newly created lots will be 39.31 acres and known as MS-23-0039, approximately 17.55 acres, and will be known as MS-23-0040, and then the smallest acreage of five acres to be known as MS-23-0041. The larger lot will remain in the agricultural zoning district, and the applicant is requesting the variance for the 17.55 acre lot and the five acre lot to remain in the agricultural zoning district. Purpose of this minor subdivision is to separate the lease site for the molting facility from the farmstead and tillable farmland that surround us, surrounds it. The subdivision is for financing reasons with the banking institution. You remember back on July 19th of 2022, Paul Wyrock was present in the Board of County Commission meeting and received approval four to one to allow this melting facility as a permitted use of general farming practices and fit as a permitted agricultural use in the agricultural zoning district. At the time this was presented, there was no indication that the parent parcel will be subdivided into smaller lots. Access to, um, MS-23-0039, which is the farmstead, will be off of 57th Street Northwest, which is always, also known as US Highway 85B, and access to the two smaller lots, um, will be off of 139th Avenue, not Northwest. Minor subdivision for this project is currently working through the review process, and recordation of this plat will be contingent of, on the approval of the variance. When the Planning and Zoning Commission heard this on November 16th, they did recommend approval seven to zero.
Okay, is the applicant present? Okay. Uh, what are the wishes of the board?
Make a motion to approve following planning and zoning recommendations.
We have a motion, is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, Brenda, roll call vote, please.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Motion passes. Thank you. Okay, moving on to, uh, department heads, uh, starting with the assessor.
Good morning, Commissioners, Darcy Anderson, Tax Director. Here to present an application for abatement for the tax year 2023 by Craig and Christine Hogland on their property at 805 Second Avenue East. They are asking for a reduction in value from $431,830 to $362,000. The property consists of a residence built in 1920, remodeled in 1999 and 2012. The house is 2,127 square feet with a detached small 400 square foot garage built in 1920. Mr. Hogland requested a property review on March 1st, 2023. Shelby Evans and Chrissy Gutierrez thoroughly inspected the property and noted changes to the record that needed to be adjusted, most notably the attic and basement finished square footage and the condition of the structures. These adjustments were presented to the city board at equalization where, and were approved. Mr. Hogland protested his value again at the county board of equalization and the state board of equalization. Two staff appraisers from the state tax department inspected the property and determined the valuation to be between $444,406 and $510,838,000, based on their analysis of the sales and cost methods. While Mr. Hogland did have an appraisal for his, for November of '22, the inherent differences in methodology between single property appraisal and mass appraisal for assessment purposes will not return the same valuation. While an appraisal can use four sales occurring within a close timeframe to the date of appraisal, we must use the entire year's worth of sales of similar properties to make our assessments. Mr. and Mrs. Hogland purchased the property from Mr. Hogland's father while they were occupying the property. Mr. Douglas Hogland had purchased the house in 2014 for $439,900. The city board heard this application on November 14th and moved to deny it, and I asked that this board also deny the 2023, uh, application for abatement.
Okay. What are the wishes of the board? Were any discussion? Or questions, I should say? Was a large bump in one year is? Went up by just under 100,000, is that correct?
Yeah, it was, um, just over 100,000, but we saw a huge in, increase in sales in those, that year of property. It was, um, that's what people are buying and they're paying a lot of money for them in the last year, so.
Yeah, they, the, um, the fact that his father paid 439,000, 2014, I mean, obviously that was a big.
Right, and we really haven't seen, we saw a little bit of slowing in the market between then and now, but we've, we haven't seen a drop since 2014, I mean.
Yeah. Any other questions? Uh, one question I have, Darcy, is in, in, in cases like this, forgive me if I've been over this before, but the, the, um, when you have a large increase like that, is that a, is there an option to step it up over a couple of years?
There isn't.
Oh, there isn't?
No, because then we would just be behind for next year's market and, you know. We would always be playing catch-up and we would essentially, there could be the potential that we would not be in compliance with the state at some point.
Right, and we don't want them to value, yeah, clearly.
I'll make a motion that we deny the request from Craig and Christine Hogland.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I would second that.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, Brenda, roll call vote, please.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, auditor.
I just wanted to present to you guys what the, uh, sale amounts were for the tax foreclosure properties. That happened on November 21st. And again, just kind of a review for you guys, um, the excess funds now goes into a fund here in the county for 90 days, where the applicant, their family members, executor, administrator are able to file for those proceeds as long, as well as anybody that has any liens against the property with the county during that 90-day period. If they don't, then that final balance will go to the state on claim funds.
Okay. Do we need to take any action on this?
No, no action needed, just kind of information for you guys.
Okay. All right, community engagement coordinator, Lindsay?
Good morning, uh, two quick things for you. Uh, the first is a couple of letters of support that have been requested from the commission as part of the state's Regional Workforce Impact Program, Grant Program. Uh, that is a program, uh, that the applications are actually due tomorrow, um, and there is a certain amount of funding that's allocated for each region across the state, um, with a focus on innovative workforce solutions. Uh, the City of Alexander, Western Region Economic Development, and the City Airport, Williston Basin International have requested letters of support for their grant applications. Some information has been provided in your packet, uh, just seeking approval to authorize the chairman to sign and, and send those along.
Okay, what are the wishes?
I'll make a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Brenda, roll call vote, please.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
And then the other item, um, there's a, a few grant extension requests. So with the grant programs this year, most folks, their funds expire at the end of the year. Um, and for a variety of reasons, uh, mostly difficulty in getting contractors, um, have really relied on, on requesting extensions for some of these grants. So, uh, Chatter is requesting one for higher date on their behavioral health grant, the James Memorial Preservation Society for the installation of their new windows, contractor help, Playworks Therapy for their renovation project, contractor help, um, and then the Western Star Foundation for their mental health first aid courses. Uh, they just kind of ran out of time in the year to hold them and would actually be able to use the funds early next year for already scheduled classes. Um, their official request letters are enclosed, uh, and so if those are approved, just asking for authorization for the chairman to sign an amendment once, um, it goes through legal review and composition.
Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, extensions and authorize the chairman to sign.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Brenda, roll call vote, please.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, uh, county highway.
The request for RFQs, request for qualifications, we have, for our biannual for consultants, we got one from Ackerman, Civil Science, Interstate Engineering, Moore Engineering, and Stan Tech. It's our biannual, so we can, when we have a, need help with something, we could pick from the group.
Any action required by the board?
Yeah, to accept them.
Okay, what are the wishes?
Uh, would make a motion to accept the RFQs, RFQs from all of the above.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Brenda, roll call vote.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, uh, county administrator.
Good morning.
Morning.
First, I'd like to introduce a new employee. Not everybody gets introduced, but department heads do. So today we have Darrell Haygood with us. He has recently relocated into our community and he is our new vector director. So we're really excited to have him. Commissioner Kemp, who's the portfolio holder for the vector board, and the chair of the vector board, Dr. Wayne Anderson, and I did go through an extensive recruiting process. We are really excited about the experience that Darrell brings to us in the area of larva sighting, which should be, um, really appropriate and useful to us here because of our landscape. I'll let Darrell say a quick hello and then I'll be back for the rest of mine.
Okay. Welcome, Darrell.
I'm proud to be here. I'm, uh, from South Florida, Lee County Mosquito Control District. Uh, the operation down there, um, involves just about every aspect of mosquito control and is well-funded, and I've been involved with all the different, um, aspects of it for the last 20 years or more. So I hope that when I, uh, start digging into how things work around here, that I can bring a lot of that experience here and, uh, and help you guys out. I really am looking forward to being here, and if there's anything that, uh, that I can do for you or any questions you have, uh, feel free to just get in touch with me. Thank you, guys.
Fantastic, welcome aboard and, uh, welcome to the frozen north, although we are in an El Nino year, so this is warm, just saying.
It's a great year to move to North Dakota. So far. People who want to ice fish are a little sad, right? All right, let's start with the easy one, position report. We had an early deadline last week, and so I have a few additions. I honestly don't even remember what yours says, so I'll tell you what mine says. Uh, Sheriff's Office, we have a corrections officer opening and a patrol lieutenant opening, and I would expect that this is one of those, um, I, I am aware that we have some internal candidates, and so it might be that this continues to show up on the report as a, as a rolling opening if we have some internal fills, but. So we have those two openings, and then in the sheriff's office, we have an assistant state's attorney position open. So I seek your approval to fill those positions, please.
In the sheriff's office, assistant state's attorney?
No, the assistant state's attorney is in the state's attorney's office.
Okay, I thought, I, sorry, I was confused.
Sorry, I just rolled one to the next.
Yes, okay, so.
Yes.
Okay.
Oh, did I?
Thank you for backing me up on that, David, I'm worried I'm losing my mind here.
No, you're not, no.
All right, it's already gone.
You're really on it, Mr. Chairman, thank you.
Okay, what are the wishes of the board? Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve the, uh, request as presented, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, Brenda, roll call vote.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Motion passes.
And then on the back, we have a couple of board positions to fill. County Port, Park Board, Brad Henchins' position was open. We did not receive any applicants, but he's interested in serving again. And then on the Water Resource District Board, Tanner Overland and Robert Gannaway's seats were open. Again, we advertise all these for 45 to 60 days, just depends a little bit on how the calendar shakes out for their meeting dates, but those were advertised again, we received no applicants, but they're both interested in serving again. So we'd ask that you reappoint those three. There are terms listed on the sheet, which I think Brenda includes in the minutes for, for future reference. The sheet gets included.
Okay, what are the wishes of the board?
I'll make a motion to reappoint all three positions with the terms that are listed.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, Brenda, roll call vote.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes. Motion passes.
All right, I, it is traditional that I, at this point, hold on, let me hand this to Brenda. Talk to you just a little bit about the possible changes you all might want to make. This is not my decision, but yours, just for your consideration. We do, so we're talking about portfolios. So we do have a few, um, appointments that we have follow the chairmanship. And so I would point out to you that as we have a chairman change, and remember our, our, sort of our, our current thought is that every two years we're changing who is in the chairman's seat, just to make sure that there is some variety and that everyone on the board is having an opportunity to do that. So the, the couple of appointments that follow the Board of County Commission chair spot is that the portfolio for the assistant state's attorney, the civil attorney that serves the board, Karen, would follow the chairmanship, as would one of the seats on the liaison committee. And so on this piece of paper that I use to track all of this, I have transitioned those items, and the joint powers board for the airport hazard area also follows with. those items, and the joint powers board for the airport hazard area also follows with the chair. So I would propose that those three get transitioned to Commissioner Kemp because of the chairmanship change. There has been some discussion about a change on the finance committee because Commissioner Montgomery and Commissioner Kemp are on the same cycle for reelection, and so it might make sense to have somebody else. And so I believe that Commissioner Kemp, you have said you'd be willing to give up that seat on the finance committee, and Commissioner Hanson would take it. There's a proposed swap in portfolios. It would be Commissioner Hanson to take the facilities slash IT department, so the things that Keith Clevin is in charge of. I think working with Commissioner Kemp a little bit if we need to on the IT piece, but then Commissioner Kemp would take DMV. Commissioner Hanson, I think would continue to serve on the liaison committee, but it's just not in the chairman's slot. We have two on the liaison committee, and so it shows up as a note here, but I've taken off UMR DC as the executive finance board for Ramberg and Hanson, but added dispatch as a Hanson portfolio. Do you have any, and I mean, again, this is not my thing, it's just me who gathers up the ideas that have been brought to me by others.
I like it, but what are the wishes of the board?
I would like to add one more item if I can, Mr. Chairman, for discussion if need be, is that, we all know there's been a lot of changes in the last few years, and this pertains to the finance committee. I would like to propose that we make a swap on the finance committee of having the county administrator as a member of the finance committee in lieu of the auditor. Nothing against, obviously, either one of them, I just think that the county administrator position aligns better with the finance committee.
Okay. Would you like to form that in a motion?
I will make a motion to make that change on the finance committee, and then I guess approve the portfolio commissioner's report as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Okay, hearing none, Brenda, roll call vote.
Bo?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, hot off the presses, I emailed this to you yesterday because we only got it done yesterday, and so I missed the opportunity to get it out to you in the packet. This is the rural addressing plan, so I mentioned it at the last meeting or the meeting before. We are going to, in the course of updating addresses for E nine one one, Next Gen nine one one, whatever you call it, we are going to have to potentially readdress a couple of residences or businesses, however it turns out. And so Karen has worked on the legal part of this for us. The GIS department staff and I have gone through some revisions to make sure the information included in this plan matches what's actually happening or what will happen. It is, it was important, as Karen looked at the century code and then case law, it is not a department, but actually a function of the county commission, that this, that addressing, rural addressing is done, and that changes, the changes that could be opposed by a resident would be handled by this board, not on an administrative level. And so that's why this plan comes to you for approval, and you will see in it that as we work through an address correction process that a resident would have some discomfort with, probably anything that we initiate would come to this board for final approval. So I would have a conversation, the vision would be, I have a conversation, we work through whatever the timing and concerns might be, but then it would come to this board for final approval. The resident would know that date and would have the ability to come here and, like anything else, cite their concerns for your final consideration of the change. Now, there could be times when a resident calls us and says, I think, I've been using this address, but I think it's wrong. And if we all agree that it's wrong and we're going to correct it, that would be an administrative change. So we're trying to be smart, not hold things up if we don't have to, but make sure people feel like there's a due process where their voice could be heard.
Okay, yeah, makes sense. Any comments, questions from the board?
Is there going to be any kind of a possibility where, like, the banks, the financial institutions, there shouldn't be any issues with the property owners if they have a mortgage or, I mean, it?
It's just, yeah, it's just an address change. We'll be able to provide a letter that says, for an administrative reason, this is the same property, it just has a new address. And this happens when recently Tioga annexed in a little area in their ETJ, and then those commercial properties in that case all get a new address because now it's in Tioga instead of whatever county road that was, or township road maybe. So address changes on existing properties happen. It's just that this is unusual because it will, to the property owner, feel as though it was a little out of, you know, out of nowhere in a way. There wasn't a thing that happened that prompted the change, other than a review of the data that found the error.
And they'll get ample notice so that they have the ability to respond, right?
Yeah, I mean, my intention would be to, I think I'm going to have to send a letter to them, because we have their address, but we don't necessarily have a phone number in the system, asking them to get ahold of me so that I can have a conversation. And at this point, I think it will be me to do that, like me, the human being. And so then it would be a conversation to explain, here's what we've found, here are what your neighboring addresses are, here's why yours does not fit, we'd like to make the change. I mean, it's really, we need to make the change, but we can be a little flexible if their daughter's getting married in a week, we could wait, we don't have to do it in the middle of something, but we'll need to make the change.
And I think we discussed this before, but you have a mechanism in place to contact Google, Bing, whoever all the map services are, MapQuest, whatever.
Yeah, we'll do our part, and Karen found in the case law, one of the important things is that we make sure we do our part, make sure all of our databases are up to date. You know, we have to have a good process on our end to make the corrections that we would normally, maybe if we make a new address, we have to be sure and contact all of those departments and agencies, but then there is some work that the homeowner or the property owner is going to have to do because we can't, we can't change the address at their bank. They'll have to do that themselves, but we'll give them a nice letter that helps to facilitate it, hopefully. And again, we have, I looked it up after I talked about this last time, we have just under twenty thousand address points in our database, and I think we'll change twenty to thirty. I mean, it's a, it's a small number. For the people impacted, it will matter, but in the big picture, it's a really small number.
Okay.
So with only twenty thousand, you'll have this done, what, late next week?
Right. We're going to, we're going to baby step our way through because we haven't done it in a formal way before. In fact, I'm not sure how often this has actually happened in the past, so we want to make sure we don't start the process with too many and then realize we overlook something. So we'll baby step until we know exactly what we're doing.
Excellent. Any other questions or anything else from you, Helen?
That's it.
Okay, we'll call this meeting adjourned.
Wait, I need an approval.
Oh, you need approval on that?
Uh huh. Official.
Official approval.
So that means unadjourned. I'll make a motion that we approve the rural addressing plan.
Okay, is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Brenda, roll call vote, please.
David?
Yes.
Barry?
Yes.
Steve?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Bo?
Yes.
Motion passes. And now we'll adjourn for the second time.